Okay. It's been motion by Ms. Abdow, supported by Ms. Williams for approval of the minutes for my regular council meeting held on Monday, April twenty sixth at seven thirty. Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
You have all she has motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no petitioners for this, uh, um, regular meeting and that moves us to number four, which is Chairperson's report.
Thank you Deputy Clerk. At six fifteen, we had a public hearing in that purpose for discussing the preliminary twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget. At this time, I want to recognize. First of all, let me say this. Uh, happy birthday, I think it was yesterday, uh, to our Councilwoman Tina Tally. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Tally. And now I would like to recognize, uh, Councilman Bill Wasworth.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just like to thank a, a few people, as you know, last week, my sister-in-law passed away. And it was, um, my wife, some Jean's only sister, and it was the only sister-in-law that I've ever had. Um, it was a very difficult eighteen months, but, uh, now she's resting with the Lord, but I'd like to thank the elected officials, uh, Mayor Burkrot. I want to thank you for what you did, um, Mrs. Abdul and the rest of the council, um, Eva, uh, Mrs. Williams for the, for the phone call. And I want to thank you all for the, um, it's the flowers that were sent. It was a very difficult time for us and, um, besides thanking you folks, some of the public also, um, sent cards and thanked me over the, or, you know, expressed their condolences. A very difficult time, but, uh, if you believe in the Lord, my sister-in-law has now in a better place. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Wasworth. Uh, the Chair now is going to recognize Congresswoman, the Honorable Rees Shee to lead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem, uh, burden and my condolences out to you, Councilman Wasworth. It sounds like it was a very painful time. I'm so sorry your family is going through this time and I pray that, uh, her memories give you peace and strength to get through this very difficult time. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity. I just wanted, um, at least many of my wonderful Romulus residents to know the American Rescue Plan uh, is being implemented right now. And please know that my office is an open door policy. So there's funeral services, uh, covered now. And if you have lost a loved one and need to seek out, um, um, the cost of bearing your loved one, please seek out my office FEMA is now uh, going through that application process. Uh, for many, uh, it's very much like tons of folks qualify obviously for the fourteen hundred dollar survival checks. Uh, please reach out again to my office and of course the child tax credit, uh, poverty tax credit. On top of that, um, you know, in the American Rescue Plan was different for some of our smaller cities like Romulus, uh, there was local funding. Um, right now it's estimated that the city of Romulus will get two point three three million dollars. Uh, know that I've signed onto a letter to make sure that amount does not change significantly. There's already been conversation of different formulas being used. And so just know myself and a number of colleagues across the country, other members of Congress are very much pushing for our lower populated cities like Romulus not to be left out. You are on the front line and crushing this virus. And you've had to use resources that really, uh, you know, many, much of which is being pulled away so that you can do the work of, of protecting our families and our communities um, throughout, uh, city of Romulus. Also, if you know anyone, and there might not be tons of folks that are listening to now, but you might know a loved one or someone else through in city of Romulus that needs rental assistance, water, uh, assistance, as well as any assistance in getting food. Uh, our office, uh, has worked really hard to get additional five hundred million dollars. We got six hundred thirty-eight million in December, but another five hundred million for water shut offs now. For all my residents listening to Romulus, I know you may not get an eviction notice right now because we have a moratorium. We also have, uh, a really internal, you know, moratorium with the Great Lakes Water Authority and others. But please know that if you have a back pill of water or rent, this is the time to seek out that assistance. I don't want that money to run out and then you all uh, are, are out of a home and not been able to also get access to water. This is millions of dollars coming into our state. Uh, we want to make sure that you all access those dollars. Um, also really wonderful news is estimated, again, fifteen million will go to our Romulus School District. I'm most excited really about our kids are going to be able to get smaller class sizes, air filtration. Um, again, it's up to the school board what they spend it on. But this is exactly how we can open our schools safely and protect our families is getting those, those dollars to schools like Romulus. Um, know that unemployment, um, is still a bit of a mess on the state level, but we do have an extension of three hundred dollars on top of what you're getting from the state unemployment, and that will last until about September, I believe, sixth or fifth, somewhere in September. Uh, know that many of us are going to watch and make sure. We know that some, uh, of our residents and neighbors don't have any jobs to go back to because of this pandemic. We want to make sure that we're taking care of them. Lastly, and, and again, really important, uh, you know, we're trying to make vaccinations accessible to everyone. It's mobile now. We put twenty billion dollars in the American Rescue Plan for mobility. Please, I know if you got vaccinated, that's wonderful. I know for some it's going to be a political debate with family members, but there is a neighbor or someone that if you just said, hey, did you know the Rite Aid or the pharmacy over here, uh, is giving vaccinations out, it's going to encourage them to seek out that vaccination. And again, um, anybody that has questions about that, I always tell them, seek out your health professional, your folks that you go to when you're sick. Ask them about any kinds of questions regarding, um, any, uh, any concerns that you might have with, with, um, vaccinations. Uh, also I worked with your mayor in regards to this, you know, one of the things that has come back, um, to Congress is requesting, uh, uh, local road funding. And one of the road funding priorities for Romulus was the Pennsylvania Avenue. Right there, I believe it's between Romulus and Huron Township. I submitted a fifteen million dollar request, very highly competitive because all four hundred and thirty-four of my colleagues also putting requests, but I got to submit, um, ten, uh, priority projects and that was one of them. So I will keep you all in the loop, uh, and of course, uh, continue to try to come and update all of you in regards to that. We're hoping to, to know more information soon. Um, I know the National Governors Association, others hope by, uh, in a month or so that we'll get more clarity from the state treasury office in regards to the allocated funds. Um, with that, uh, uh, Mayor Protem, you can open up for any questions. And again, uh, any residents listening in and hearing about these uh, services and resources that are available through the American Rescue Plan, please know that my office is ready to, to help.
Okay, I would like, is there any questions from council? If not, I'd like to, the mayor, would you like to say anything, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. And I, I just wanted to thank the Congresswoman for her help. She's been working with us on the, on the act and the dollars that are coming in, fighting to make sure we don't lose our amount. But also that grade separation that she mentioned, uh, with, we're working with Eritreopolis, with Huron, with Wayne County, the state. Um, that's, that's been huge for us, um, not just economically, but as a safety concern. Uh, so, uh, we're working to try to get that funded, which would be an overpass on Pennsylvania Road on the CSX line. So thank you for her and her staff and their willingness to try to help with that. It's, it's been an ongoing issue and, uh, be sure, open prayer, we can get that one, uh, get that one in the win column. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, you know, if it wasn't for your, the letters of support, you really hustled, we got those letters of support and we got SEMCOG involved. So I appreciate you, uh, helping get that because it makes our application and request stronger. So I really do appreciate that. And it's Pennsylvania Road, Pennsylvania Avenue in DC.
That's okay.
But I, I
It's just as important as
Yes, but I really appreciate it. And you know, hats off to SEMCOG. They were able to get us even more information. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council?
To the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally.
Uh, just want to echo our mayors about our Congresswoman. I mean, just, uh, uh, awesome news. Thank you for the plethora of great information you just just spotted on us in just a few minutes. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Um, I'm on the county calls every couple of weeks with the county and she's always there with a bunch of great information and updates regarding the district that she works. And thank you for your great representation for us. Thank you.
Any other, any other comment, uh, Mr. Wasworth?
And to the, uh, to the Congresswoman, I live about one mile from Pennsylvania Road or Avenue, whatever you want to call it, but we sure do need that grade for the trains. I've been putting up with it down here for thirty-five, forty years and it definitely becomes a problem for not only Romulus, but, but Huron Township.
Yeah, and, and any help, you know, I, I would love for city council, if you all want to pass a resolution to send to both of our senators, because I really need the help of US Senator Peters as well as Stabenow to make sure they carry, uh, that request onto the Senate. Uh, I know I've, I've also sought out the help and support of, uh, Congresswoman Dingle gave us a letter of support and we appreciate her partnership because it does get into her district and Huron Township, but anything we can do to raise awareness and, and make this a priority project for the Biden administration.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the? Yes, go ahead. Who's this?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to thank our Congresswoman for not only just Romulus, but the entire thirteenth district. Thank you for your great work.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
To the Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Okay, I apologize to my colleagues and everyone on Zoom this evening because of technical difficulty. I'm all, I'm on my phone, but to my Congresswoman, thank you, thank you, thank you. And we will be talking very, very soon.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Okay, any other comments? So let's go leave it, go leave it to the Chair. Any other comments? Let's go leave it to the Chair, right?
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I, I would add on is that I, I would love to get a resolution if council be willing to. We, we've gotten them from Conference of Western Wayne and DCC and SEMCOG, but, uh, to send to the, the senators as well. I think that's a great point. So I, I would, I would welcome that if, uh, council, uh, deems it fit.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we, um, that we, um, send the appropriate resolutions to, uh, everybody and all who can give us a hand in elected officials with this, um, Pennsylvania Road, um, overpass.
And I support that.
Who supported it? I'm sorry. Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Okay, now my comment. The Chair get a chance to talk, right?
You have three minutes.
Oh, three minutes, got it. And I left thirty seconds off already. Well, first of all, uh, to our Congresswoman to lead. I think you're doing a great job. And I really appreciate what you do for the thirteenth district. First of all, I think you're doing a tremendous job. And we all appreciate you for the hard work and the spirit that you go for our district. We are very proud of you. We are behind you. And I just want to say, keep up the good work. Anything that I could do in the future, please don't hesitate. I really thank you, Congresswoman to lead. You know, I know all the council people and the mayor and all our district appreciate you.
I appreciate that, Mayor Protem. And you know, to all my residents, to all the council members, uh, you know, during this public health crisis, uh, if anything, you know, coming together and making sure our residents get access to resources, equal access, putting any differences we have aside and just make them a priority is really what's most important to me. And just know that, again, uh, you know, everything I do is from a place of love and I'm a social worker at heart. I just want our families and people in our communities to feel safe and be safe. And that means crushing this virus, making sure they have water, making sure they have recourse to rent, making sure they have money to bury their loved ones. I can't believe how many GoFundMe pages were out there because people couldn't afford to bury their loved ones. So this is the time uh, to, for us to come together and making sure that our residents have everything they need.
Thank, thank you, uh, Honorable Councilwoman. Now we would like to take the vote for the resolution. Uh, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, that motion is approved. That concludes, uh, any other comment?
Uh, yes, I just, uh, just for the purpose of the record, uh, could we get what will be the title of this particular resolution?
Uh, Pennsylvania Road, uh, Mayor, well, what's the proper term?
Uh, the one, so the way I submitted it, I'm sorry for interrupt. It's Pennsylvania Road grade separation.
Pennsylvania Road grade separation.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the Chairperson's report. Again, thank you, Congresswoman to lead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept your report, please.
Support.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb for approval of the Chairperson's report. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That will move us to, uh, to the item number five, the mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council, um, our Deputy Clerk, Treasurer, uh, those listening at home for our audience. Um, I wanted to start off also with, uh, wishing a happy birthday to Councilwoman Tina Tally. And Tina, this one I thought up for you. It's Luke one thirty-seven, "For nothing will be impossible with God." And I thought that was an awesome one. And you had a beautiful day yesterday and, uh, well deserved. So we, we wish you that, uh, and many more. Uh, I, I do have a couple, uh, action items, Mr. Chairman, tonight, uh, that are before you. Uh, the first one up is, uh, item number A. And what you have, this is kind of the Roberto show early on, uh, recommendation from Bertos Scapatici, our DPW Director, and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, and this, uh, request is to concur with the administration award ITB a bid twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen to the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, Core and Main, for a two-year fixed price, uh, pricing to end on, uh, June thirtieth of twenty-three on water hydrant and gate valves. These funds have been verified and budgeted out of the water fund operating supply expense account that's listed.
To the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration and award ITB twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen to the lowest, most responsive, responsible bidder, Core and Main, for two-year fixed pricing, uh, water hydrants and gate, gate valves.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally. Who supported that?
Ms. Williams.
Okay, for some reason I, okay. It's, it's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams for ITB twenty slash twenty-one dash thirteen for the two-year contract pricing for the water hydrant and gate valve. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is also a recommendation from Bertos Scapatici, DPW Director, and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. Uh, this wants to concur with the administration award ITB twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen uh, to John D. Osborne Trucking, Inc. That's for a two-year fixed pricing, uh, purchase of gravel, sand, and limestone on an as-needed basis. Those funds have been verified and budgeted, uh, out of both the major and local straight funds and that operating supply account that was listed for the water fund. And, uh, that's also noted that that's a local vendor.
To the Chair?
To the Chair, if I may.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, that, was that Ms. Webb?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to make that motion to concur.
Okay, support.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Mr. Wasworth for the ITB twenty twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen, two-year contract pricing for gravel, sand, and limestone. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from a Bertos Scapatici, DPW Director, Rich Hobgood from OHM, and Gary Harris from Purchasing. Uh, this one is to concur with the administration award ITB a twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen to the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, Blue Ribbon Contracting, Inc. That's for the installation of a ten-inch sanitary sewer, uh, within the easement along the front of the homes on the west side of Osga between Porter and West Sharon River Drive. Uh, the amount is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, six ninety-one, zero cents. Uh, the ten percent contingency that, uh, comes with that is nineteen thousand, eight sixty-nine, and ten cents for any unforeseen construction issues that may arise. That's also a local vendor, a city council, and those funds have been verified and budgeted out of the water and sewer construction fund.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we, uh, that we approve ITB, um, twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen as the Osga Road Sanitary Sewer Investigation.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Abdow for the ITB twenty slash twenty-one dash fifteen, Osga Sanitary Sewer Investigation. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. And my last action item is a recommendation from Tina, uh, Tanya Colfield, excuse me, Recreation Department Coordinator. Uh, this one is for the, um, uh, concurrence of an authorization for a no-fee permit for the family of the late David Jones to use as Historical Park Pavilion on Thursday, May the sixth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at one PM for a repass. All necessary safety protocols and social distancing requirements will be followed should city council concur with that recommendation.
To the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the family of the late David Jones to use the Historical Park Pavilion on Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at one PM for a repass.
Who's to support?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams for a request for a no-fee permit for the Romulus Historical Park. Ms. Webb?
Wait a minute.
Yes.
To the Chair, can I have just a quick discussion?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Tally.
Thank you. Um, I had a, a, a conversation with Tanya earlier and I think she's on the line. Um, if you could, Tanya, um, just from, um, our conversation earlier, expanding on the recommend, I know you're going to be bringing more information to us uh, about, uh, recommending adding a weekday rental options for memorial gatherings as an outdoor venue. Um, can you kind of expand on that a little bit more, please?
Go ahead, Tanya, if you're there.
Um, sure. Um, so we have been noticing that, um, more and more people are looking for an outdoor venue, um, for repasses or memorials. And we like to give them the opportunity to, um, rent our parks during the week only, um, for a specific amount of time, um, at a lower rate than what we normally charge for weekend, um, rentals.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms., uh, Mr. Chair. Um, that moves us to agenda item number six, which is the Clerk's report. Uh, good evening, once again, uh, city council members, Mr. Mayor, Madam Treasurer. Um, as you're aware, that Clerk Bragg, she is not present. She is actually at the different polling locations, setting up the precincts for tomorrow's, um, May election. And a quick shout out to the Clerk's office. We have been very fine-tuned and sharp on our preparation. We've kind of been ahead of the game. So actually, we're al- almost in a waiting mode. Unfortunately, we couldn't set up the precincts earlier due to our polling use agreement with the schools. But now that we're able to get into the schools, that's pretty much the last leg for this journey. We're very well prepared for tomorrow's election. Um, we do have two action items for the Clerk's report. Action item six A, second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty to pay for final construction costs of Goddard Road Street State. The original Budget Amendment nineteen slash twenty dash eleven was approved in a regular council meeting on December ninth, twenty nineteen, and funds were not dispersed for payment to State of Michigan M-Dot. This budget amendment was introduced at the regular council meeting held on April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
To the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make the motion for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally. Second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Um, agenda item six B is for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty-one to pay for costs associated with repair to the Pinewood Pump Station, number one, guide rail and base replacement. This budget amendment was introduced at regular council meeting held on April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Need a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment, um, twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty-one.
Support.
The motion by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Ms. Williams for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash twenty-one. Any discussion? Here, no discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdow?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. And that concludes the Clerk's report. And that moves us to agenda item number seven, Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. Um, I do not have anything under my report, do I? But I do want to wish Tina Tally a happy birthday and of course our clerk, Ellen Craig Bragg, she celebrated her birthday on May first. So happy birthday to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, that moves us to number eight, Public Comment. This is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The Ray Ha, the raised hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you have joined the meeting online, use the raised hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute when acknowledged and to mute yourself when finished. If dialing in from a touch-tone phone, press star nine from your phone to raise your hand and press star six from your phone to unmute when acknowledged. And again, press star six to mute yourself when finished. After you have been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Upon expiration of your three minutes, you will be muted. Additional time will be upon the approval of the Chairperson. As a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion. Mr. Chair, I do not see any raised hands. Neither do we have any comments submitted via email.
Okay, uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That moves us to agenda item nine, Unfinished Business.
Any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? No unfinished business?
Okay, Agenda Item Number Ten, New Business.
Any new business? Uh, Mr. Wasworth, do you have your hand over?
No, I'm sorry. I put your piece of paper up here.
Oh, okay. All right. No new business?
Right, Agenda Item Number Eleven, Communication.
Any communication?
Yes, to the chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
I just want to thank all the well wishes I received on my birthday. It was very tremendous, very overwhelming. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you, Treasurer, Mayor, um, Mayor Protem, um, everybody for the well wishes yesterday. It was just a tremendous day. And then it was a beautiful day on top of all of that. Um, I had a beautiful day on my birthday. So thank everybody. But I do have to do a quick shout out to my mom. Her birthday is actually a week before my birthday. So don't tell her I forgot to shout her out last week. But her birthday was a week, uh, uh, last Sunday. Mine is this, was this past Sunday. We got Mother's Day this upcoming Sunday. So, and then, um, my sister's is two week, uh, a week after that. So it's a big succession of birthdays in our family. So, um, and a lot of celebrations. So it's a, it's tremendous, but it's, uh, good stuff. So thank again, everybody for the shout out and to my mom, Reverend Rita Tally, for her birthday last Sunday. And then the other thing, I just want a couple of quick reminders. Um, don't forget about our, uh, seniors. Their upcoming prom toast is Wednesday, June second. They are still seeking donations. Um, they're going to do it differently because of COVID. They're looking to do swag bags for the, uh, students, for the seniors. So donation, they're accepting donations up until May, uh, May twenty-fourth, I think. So please reach out to Nina Burton at the, uh, high school, who will accept your donation so that they can, uh, do these swag bags for our seniors. Um, just to give them something to be in the midst of a pandemic and, you know, can't properly do the prom like they normally do. Um, it's a little different. So we just want to support our seniors in that effort. And then also we want to keep in mind, we have our upcoming free dumping days coming up at DPW. Um, the dates are May twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-second. That's Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Uh, Thursday, Friday from eight-thirty to three, Saturday, eight-thirty to two at the DPW at one-two-six-hundred Wayne Road. Um, if you need additional information, please contact seven-three-four-nine-four-two. Uh, it looks like seven, seven, five, seven-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, uh, Tally. Any other communications? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would just like to, um, inform the mayor. I had a resident to just be attached. And they're concerned about, uh, being able to get the insurer from the senior building. So what I'll do, I'll forward their name and number to the mayor's office. So, uh, they'll be able to get a hold to that insurer.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And also, uh, forgotten harvest, because the schools are not now back in, we have to start at eleven instead of twelve. So for all those that have benefited and, uh, choose to continue to benefit from forgotten harvest, we will start at eleven o'clock. The reasons is we have to be off the school property before the buses pull up. So please, if anyone, you don't need any ID. All you need is your, uh, name and your address and then we'll load you up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other communication?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Ms. Abdo.
I'd like to thank those people who have donated to a sponsor, uh, kid to prom this year. We are winding it up this week so that we can notify, the schools can notify the kids who they're giving these tickets to. So if you are still wanting to donate, please contact me or Sandy Tenny this week. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Abdo. Any other comments on the communication? If not, I'd like to make a comment. Any other comments? Okay. Okay, this is interesting what I'm getting ready to say. I usually don't talk. I look at, look at Ms. Abdo, got a chin and say, wow, what did Mr. Barker go say now? Uh, I just, look at, uh, Ms. Williams. I just, uh, wow, I don't know if I should say this or not. But I know some of the local, uh, news channels been calling me. I just discovered that, uh, forty-five years ago, when I used to live in, uh, Lorain, Ohio. I think I was twenty, I think twenty-one, twenty-two, just got out of college. And, you know, I lost my son, Dino. It, I just passed a few months ago. I lost my son. And I just discovered that I got another son.
Oh, my goodness.
Now, this is before I married now. Cause I, the, the, I would have got killed if I'd have had a son, married, married with my wife. But just before I got married. And, uh, forty-five years ago, I took a DNA test and I do have a son in Cleveland, Ohio. I have two grandbabies by my son. A boy and a girl. He's a doctor and his wife is a doctor. God had blessed me because I lost a son and again, again, a son that I never knew I had. And he's such a nice person. A God-given person. I'm so appreciated for my new family. My wife accepted him as her son because we lost a son. God works misery, God's work miracles. I just want to say thank you, son. I told him when I was in Cleveland, I just came back from Cleveland, Ohio. He told me never bring Michigan up to his state again. But I said, that's okay. I tell my Michigan Wolverines, didn't Ohio state, they love that football, you know? So I just want to say thank you, son. I love you. And it's so good for me to live in Romulus because I lived, I went to, uh, Cleveland. There's no other place than Romulus. Thank you. And that's all I have to say on my communication. Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Williams?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Woo, wow. Okay, uh.
To the chair, if I may?
Ms. Webb?
John?
Uh huh.
Thank you. It takes a brave, um, person to admit, but it takes a fantastic father to admit and accept. So congratulations and blessings to you and your family continuously.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Thank you. Okay.
Are there any more communications for any other council members? Well, there, Mr. Chair, that moves us to Agenda Item Number Twelve. That is a German and it is eight-twelve PM.
We'll move.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wasworth, supported by, who supported that?
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
For adjournment, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, we are adjourned. God bless.
Have a wonderful.
Thank you.